Mayor pro town Josh Friday. You snuck in after I made my list, but sorry about that. There's a new police chief in town. If you haven't met him yet, Adam McGill is here. Where's Adam? And of course, the fire chief for the Nevada Fire Protection District, Chief Hein. The Chamber puts this event on every year. It's done through our Governmental Affairs Committee and through our Business Events Committee. Those committees are charged with making sure our members and sometimes the public is engaged in what's going on in the town and what's going on civically. And clearly, understanding what's going on in the city where they run businesses or operate businesses is a very important part of how we all survive and how the city is successful. So that's why they do this event every year. We don't do it for any political reasons. We don't do it to push any certain slant in any direction. It's just an open conversation about what's going on in the town we all, a lot of us live and work in. So that's what it's about. I want to give a thanks to Panera Bread. If you've got some good coffee and some goodies, that's courtesy of Panera Bread, who's one of our members, and you know where they are over at Natajoke. So take their menus in the back, please. Go over to them and tell them thanks. Tell them you were here. Tell them the stuff was good and thank you for supporting the city and supporting the Chamber in some of the things we do from time to time. I'd also like to let you know, we are streaming this on social media, according to my staff, right, left, and sideways. It's on seven, five different social media platforms. It's being streamed live on the City of Nevada's website. It's being streamed live on Nevada Community Television, who are in the room as well. So we're getting this out because if some people can't come, they can sit and have their coffee at home and still find out what's going on. So we're going to let, the city manager's going to come up and he's going to give you his address on what's happening and what he thinks has been happening and is going to happen in the city. And then we will have a Q and A session afterwards, which I will moderate for you. You don't have to throw them softball questions. You can throw them any question you want. But I am going to keep you to a question, not to a statement. So if you get off track a little bit, I'm just going to remind you, you're here to ask a question. All right? Let me, since Reagan is new, four months, three and a half, four months?
Call it four.
Well, it's called a four. Right. Since he's new, and some of you know his background, some of you don't. And I usually don't do the entire bio for a city manager, because most of you know who that person is when they're here for a while. But since he's a rookie, we're going to go ahead and I'm going to give you his short bio.
Rookie? Already taken out the softballs.
That's right. Already taken out the softballs. Just a rookie here, not with his experience in what he's done. So let me clarify. He's a rookie to Nevada, not to everything else. So let me read you his bio, so that you know a little bit about him. He's a longtime Bay Area person who grew up in the East Bay city of Hayward. Reagan is the seventh in his family with siblings, cousins, nieces, and nephews living all over the Bay Area. His parents were born in West Oakland and attended Oakland schools before moving to become some of the first families to live in Hayward. Reagan went to school at Saint Beads?
Beads.
Saint Beads for eight years and graduated from Moreau High School, both in Hayward. After a few years working his way through Shebaux, Shebat, Shebo? One of the two. You need easier names. College. Shebaux-Like Moreau in Hayward. Reagan completed his undergraduate studies with a Bachelor of Arts from the California State University at Long Beach. He then began a career in local government through an internship program with the Orange County City of Santa Ana. The internship set the stage for an upwardly mobile career with the City of Santa Ana, including the completion of a Master's in Public Administration along the way from the Graduate Center for Public Policy and Analysis, also at California State University of Long Beach. Santa Ana assignments included redevelopment, downtown development, community outreach, housing development, program implementation, and project management. After 17 years in Santa Ana, see, he's not really a rookie, right? Reagan and his family, a wife of 26-plus years, Shelley, Deneen, Candelario, and their three children, Aiden, Avery, and Alana, relocated to the Central Coast and made their home in San Luis Obispo, with Reagan working in the private sector for redevelopment and real estate firm, and subsequently for the City of Guadalupe. The most recent four years, Reagan served as a city manager for the City of Fortuna up in the no-no Cal county of Humboldt. I read that properly. That's exactly what it says. Reagan started as the seventh city manager for the City of Nevada on October 24, 2016. He's active with all sports, fishing when possible, and he loves to cook. So with that, I give you the new city manager for Nevada, Reagan Candelario.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. I'm really looking forward to this presentation with you this morning, actually. It's something that I think is very important, to have a relationship between the city and our community. And I think by providing this information is one way to definitely do that. I have kind of a lot of material for you here today. As you know, the City of Nevada is a big organization. We've got over 200 employees. And there's a lot of things that we're doing around town. And there's a lot of things that we're doing on a long-term basis to prepare for providing services to this community. So there is a lot here, but I do like to interact and I do like to answer questions, whether they be softballs or hardballs or whatever it is. Maybe it's my athletic past. I like to see a good fastball and even a good curveball. It's a challenge to me. So if anything, while I'm going through this, if it piques some interest of yours, or there's a question that pops up, let me know. Put your hand up or whatever. Or maybe some of our staff can see, Koi, help me out with this. Because I want to answer those questions. That's part of my being here this morning, is so that we can have that relationship and we can talk. But there is a lot to get through here. I should probably get started, but I kind of feel like I should explain that no-no Cal thing. You know, I don't like hearing my bio. It just makes me feel so much older, having that many years of doing anything. But really, I grew up in the Bay Area. I grew up in the East Bay. And so that's Northern California. And so no Cal is kind of the thing. Somehow, I ended up down in Orange County in Long Beach, and that's where I met my wife. So we were there. So that was SoCal. And then we ended up moving to the Central Coast, as he mentioned, San Luis Obispo. And so there, they call it SLOCal. San Luis Obispo, it's the acronym SLO. So that's what we have there. And then I ended up with this position up in Humboldt County. And to me, that's no-no Cal. It's Northern California. They don't really appreciate that up there, though. While I was there for four years, they are the Northern California. They don't see much north of Santa Rosa. So to them, no-no Cal was, no, we are all of Northern California. So anyway, that's where no-no Cal came from. Good morning, everybody. You know, I want to say good morning to the Nevotans. But I mean, is that really what you guys call yourselves? Is that what we, I am somewhat new and somewhat of a rookie. So I was just curious. Is that what people call themselves? Are you, is it Novitites? Noviticians? Is that anything that anybody's ever used? I came up with this one, Novitarians. Is that any? There are quite a few Rotarians, and I see a few here in the public. Maybe that's something you guys have used for the Rotary Clubs. We have some great Rotary Clubs here in Nevada. I've already been out to a few of them. Those are just great organizations. I'll touch on that a little bit later as well. So I'll stick with Nevotans for now. As you know, I've been here just a little over four months as your city manager. I don't have all the answers. You know, I don't really have a grand plan for Nevada yet. I'm still learning. This is something that I've shared with all the groups that I get out and speak with. I need to really learn the organization and learn all the people and all the great people that are here today that provide services in our community. I think that's important. You know, you've got to have a good base. You've got to understand the history. You've got to know what's going on before you really start making substantial recommendations or suggestions or changes. You've got to become a part of the community, which I intend to do. My wife and I, we got a home here. We're very fortunate to do that. So I do consider myself a Nevaton already. You know, we have the real estate. And I wanted to get to be more a part of this community before we go forward. We're very happy to be here in this. You know, it's one of the healthiest and most educated counties, and therefore, city in the country. So that's one of the reasons why we chose to be here and come and provide service in the City of Nevada, which, again, with this bio that was read for me, you know, it's almost 28 years now that I've been in local government. So that's why I guess the term rookie, you know, kind of caught me there. You know, but so really, I have been providing services to the communities that I've lived in for quite a long time. And I'm looking forward to a long career here in the City of Nevada. In my short time here, though, I have marveled at Nevada's incredible assets. We've got a lot of open space, parks, wetlands. You'll be seeing things popping up behind me here as we go. Our Mount Burdell, I mean, you know, it's right there. My wife and I and my daughter, we've spent some time out there already. We actually got caught in a really great rainstorm when we were out there in the middle of a hike, but still just love it. It's so beautiful around here in Nevada. You know, there's other things that are great about this city. I enjoyed the Paint the Town Red event. Again, thank you Chamber of Commerce for putting on a great event, you know, celebrating the city's birthday. What else? You know, some of the other things that, you know, as part of that particular event, and I have somebody sitting here in the front row, one of our Citizens of the Year, Gene McLeamy, these are things that make Nevada great, the people, you know, and their efforts on behalf of our organization. I'm really glad that Clay was able to introduce our city council, who's here today. You know, it takes leaders like that to spend their time and their hard-earned, you know, interest in the City of Nevada to make things happen and make things run. So thank you for recognizing them here today. Other things are our businesses, you know, our entrepreneurial spirit, our engaged community. I'm glad to see so many people here in the room. One of the things I hope to make sure I sprinkle in through this presentation is encouraging you to come out. Attend our city council meetings. We have public comment on every item on every meeting. And we need to hear from the community, and we like to hear from the community. That gives us some good feedback in terms of where we're going, making sure that we're going in the right direction. So please take advantage of those opportunities. You know, for those things, you know, we actually have a pretty solid foundation here in Nevada. I'm not stepping into something that, it is a difficult job. You know, they always are. But we've got such a great foundation here and a good history. That's one of the things that brought me to Nevada. So I've also learned how resilient we are in this community. We've weathered our share of tough economic times. Similar to other cities in the state, you know, the economy goes up and down. Everybody's facing difficult budgets with their local government. I'm sure you've seen a lot in the news, some of the cities that have even gone to the level of bankruptcy. That's not the case here in Nevada. Like I said, we do have a good, solid foundation. And so even though we're similar to other cities, you know, we're not like any other city in California in so many ways, because of that strength and that foundation that we have. And particularly, one thing that's kind of unique in Nevada in terms of us being different, is that we have a, you know, a very low tax rate, property tax rate. And that's something that, you know, is important to us, because as we try to provide services to the community, we rely on those taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, the transient occupancy tax. And we're actually one of the lowest here in the county. In addition, we don't have some of the fees and taxes that other cities have. We are actually the only city in the state that doesn't collect franchise fees from our waste haulers. And so that's another thing that kind of limits us a little bit. We don't have utility user taxes, another major resource that most cities rely upon to provide those services to the community. So, but we are still doing well. We're doing our best. Our city council has been very judicious with the resources that we do have. And we are continuing to work on our long-term fiscal stability. We have an excellent staff in our finance department. I don't know if I've seen him here yet today. Wait, I'm getting a point. Yeah, Brian in the back, Brian Cochran. We have some great staff. Brian does an excellent job for us. We actually just completed Tuesday night, so two nights ago. God, they kind of run together so much these days with so many things that we have going on. But we just provided our city's forecast to the city council this past week. And so what we do is we look out to the five-year horizon to try and gauge where are we going, what do we need to, anticipating, so that we can try and address those things that we know that are coming up in the future. So. So I mentioned Brian, you know, who's sitting there. We have a lot of staff. One of the things I like to make sure that the communities that I speak to understand is that we are a service organization. So we are essentially people, you know, like myself and all the staff that you see here today that helped me put together this presentation. You know, that's what local services take. You know, Mark and his organization, they're the firemen. You know, it's those bodies. There's a lot of things that they do from a technical nature and equipment that they have to have that you see driving around. But it's their bodies. It's the people that provide those services and respond to those calls. That's what local service is. That's what our organization is about. Did I lose you on this yet? So our economic indicators are actually heading in the right direction. So I don't want to sound too negative. Our transient occupancy tax, you know, has been going up. Over the last five years, we've had double-digit growth. And it's projected to continue strong at 4% in 2016-17. We have some excellent local amenities here in town. Our local hotel iers provide a good service, and we have a lot of visitors. And thank you, a lot of the people in the business community, the people that you have come in to do work with you, are contributing to that. They're utilizing those hotels, and that provides services to, gives us the ability to provide services in the community. Also, our property assessed valuation continues growth, strong growth, at about 5.5% in fiscal year 16-17. So again, that is another excellent number, and it's good for us. As we've developed our budgets, we've been very conservative, and we project a little bit lower than that. And fortunately, property taxes have been coming in a little bit better. So that is helpful for us here. And again, it's you guys. It's the business community. It's because of your commitment to the community and the projects and your buildings that you own and maintain, you know, as those property values stay strong and as they get improved, that's what generates those property taxes that we're able to provide services with. So that's very important. So thank you all for your efforts in that respect. A final one here is our Measure C. You know, again, thank you, Community of Nevada, for supporting that measure and having it pass. It's going to provide about $2.5 million per year to the city's sales tax, our annual revenues that come in from sales tax. And in, which in fiscal year 16-17, our current fiscal year, it's going to reach nearly $12 million. So thank you. That is a big boost, and it really helps us to continue to provide the services that we have available to you right now. I'm also happy to report that our reserves are healthy, and our pension plans are actually better funded than most. A lot of cities throughout California are really struggling with that, and it's from a long history of decision-making. You probably see that in the news quite a bit with other cities, and hopefully, we won't be seeing it too much here in the City of Nevada. Basically, because our leadership had the foresight years ago to know that there would be increase in costs, an increase in costs in the long run, if we had adopted some of those very lucrative retirement plans. Other cities were adopting those, and it's really making it tough on them. Last year, our city's credit rating was upgraded to the second highest rating by Standard and Poor's. So that's another good, very positive thing for the City of Nevada. You know, we're still going to need to address our ever-increasing services cost while trying to retain our qualified staff that we have on right now. That's one of the challenges that I think is really facing our organization. One of the things I have is a high priority on my list, coming in as the new rookie in Nevada. I guess the rookie word came up again. I wanted to share with you, one of the things that Standard and Poor's rating, one of my first actual assignments in local government as a rookie, when I was in Santa Ana, was preparing materials as our city was going, when I was in Santa Ana, they were going for their new bond credit rating. And one of the things I was assigned with in redevelopment was doing some cost-benefit analysis for different projects that we had been involved with, which was actually a really fun project. We looked at a lot of different things. I probably shouldn't go into that here, but I don't know that I really understood it, you know, back then, when I actually was a rookie. But, you know, we had some very good success, and the bond credit ratings were increased. And then we were able to get some reduced, refinance some of our city bonds back then. It allowed us to do other things. We actually, you know, created a new police administration building while I was there in Santa Ana. I didn't know, though. I didn't understand what I was doing. But, you know, now I do, you know, after all these years. And so anyway, it's great that we did have our credit rating increased. You should also be aware that Nevada was making significant investments in our city's infrastructure. And I've got a few examples here for you, things that we've accomplished over the past few years. We're going to start in our public works area. Shabrin is right on it, as always. In addition to hundreds of requests for services each week, and flood protection work, street repair, park issues, our pool, building maintenance that is managed by the department, our public works people gave our parks a needed refresh this year, including new landscaping, amenities, signage. They actually put a new roof on the gymnastics center. I don't know if any of you have been to that facility yet. I expect that probably some of you have. And if you've got kids that are in that program, you'll see what quality it is. We just had a presentation by that organization earlier this week at our city council meeting, fundraising that they do to strengthen their organization and assist us as a city with providing those services. And they have a big meet coming up, too. I wish I could remember out of the top of my head when that is. I think it's going to be the weekend of the 10th, March 10th, 11th, and 12th. It is. I do thank you. So go check that out. We have people coming to visit us from all over California to compete in this meet. And again, that ties back to that transient occupancy tax that we mentioned earlier. Those people, when they come to visit us, they're not only staying in the hotel, but they're patronizing our local businesses. And so that's a good thing. I understand we have a fairly strong team here in Nevada as well. So hopefully, they'll compete well. Let's see, where was I now? We also, you know, repaved the interchanges at DeLong and Ignacio Avenues. That included pedestrian and bike lane improvements. We completed an LED retrofit to make every light, every street light in the city, and there's 4,500 of them in Nevada, to an energy-efficient type of facility. Now, again, now that's saving money. These are things that our organization does on a regular basis to try and improve what we're doing and try and provide those services at a lower cost, if at all possible. So that's one that's excellent, saving the city money. We've re-landscaped medians along key corridors in our city, including Redwood, Rowan, and DeLong, widened Olive Avenue all the way to Atherton to accommodate new bike lanes on both sides of the street, which I think is very important. In my short time here, I've already met with a number of bike enthusiasts. We've got some excellent people on our commission. You know, is Mark here today? Mark Bernbaum? Okay, another person, the chair of that organization. We've had numerous discussions. I know our council member, Eric Lukin, I think, was out on a bike last week. We had an event, riding around town, kind of making sure that people understood where these opportunities were. I wish I could have joined you with that, but as you know, we had multiple things going on on that particular Wednesday. I give Eric a lot of credit for being able to get out there and do that and still attend the meeting that we had that evening. So the city is also successful at teeing up our countywide, you know, quiet zone in partnership with the City of San Rafael, which will be in place when SMART begins service later this year. And we've completed the first phase of our downtown SMART station with hopes of completing the rest, you know, this year, Phase Two. We have a little bit of a funding gap that we need to get refilled there. We were fully funded at one point. We had a little bit of a setback, but we're working hard to get the rest of that put back together so we can complete all of the downtown station. I probably should have highlighted more that partnership with the City of San Rafael. Something I think is very important to the City of Nevada is creating partnerships and collaborative efforts, working with our other governmental organizations at all levels, so that we can bring more things to the City of Nevada. And so that is one of those partnerships that I'm proud of. Let's see. So we're also doing our best to shape our city's future through innovation, leveraging our technology, our existing technology, and developing new approaches to improve how we deliver services. Our IT team moved our police department to a shared dispatch system with the county, again, working together with another organization. So this will not only increase our officer safety in the field, but it will reduce our ongoing costs. The city's vehicle fleet has been outfitted with a new fuel management system that boosts efficiency, cuts fuel-related costs, again, saving the city money. You know, what we do is we have to drive cars around pretty regularly. That costs gas. It costs the people that are in the car. But we're doing what we can to save money every place that we can. And that helps keep our fleet on the road, actually, and better maintained as well, having that new IT in there. We're also on the way to replacing an antiquated mapping system with the latest in GIS technology, which will provide mobile applications for our staff in the field, code enforcement, public works, and the police. And it's an invaluable information resource for our community. So having that available now will bring more of our data, more of our information to you, you know, that may be interested in that and giving you the vehicle to access that information. Recently, our Community Development Department launched a new resource on our website. It's called Open Counter. Please take a click there if you haven't yet, particularly you Chamber members that will be very interested in that. It's going to make it easier for businesses to navigate the city's permit process, explore locations for new or expanding businesses, and understand the costs and requirements unique to their project. I've been through this a couple of times myself. We actually made a presentation to our city council regarding this new service that we're providing to the community a few weeks back. I just see that as another excellent, you know, I'll call it streamlighting of city staff, so that our community doesn't necessarily have to come in and stand at the counter to try and find information that they're looking for. They can do it from home, and they can get all the information they need. And then still, of course, share that request with the staff. And then we can already have a relationship built, have a lot of questions answered up front, help people move forward, hopefully save them some time. Okay. Let's see. So moving on a little bit, one of the things that we do is we're always trying to keep our economic engine primed, in an effort to get ahead of any potential next recession. You know, I kind of tread lightly on there, but again, thinking back through my years, you know, 28 years in government, we have these ebbs and flows in the economy. I know that all of you understand that. Early in my career, again, as a rookie, I'll share this a little bit of history. At my position that I had in the City of Santa Ana was actually cut two different times from the budget through, you know, reductions. Fortunately, they retained me. They found another position for me, which I'm thankful for. You know, but I've just, I've seen that myself, and things happen. So what we want to do is try and be prepared and, you know, anticipate as much as we can, so that we can prepare our organization to continue to be strong and continue to provide the services that you all expect and that you've become accustomed to. Let's see. I'm going to move forward here to Hamilton Base. Our Hamilton Bay's project, managed by Tom Ward, was successful in completing a federal lands-to-parks exchange, again, more governmental, intergovernmental partnerships, which freed up nearly 19 acres of city-owned properties for redevelopment, and at the same time, created 90 acres of preserved open space, which is something I know is very important to, you know, Nevotans, you know, within this community here. So I think that's great. So very soon, we'll be working with the community and our council to discuss how best to revitalize those properties in Hamilton. In addition, the city closed escrow on the Hamilton cottages, which is a 16-unit, single-family senior housing on Hamilton Parkway. It was an underutilized, difficult-to-assemble parcel, and it's now provided actually $500,000 in revenue to the city, and it creates a housing solution to help our seniors. So that's a very successful project. It's the one on the bottom right corner there, if you're taking a look at the slides. Another thing that we have moving forward, which I think is excellent in Nevada, the backbone of our economy is our small businesses. So again, that's why I really enjoy being in front of a group like this and working with the Chamber of Commerce. We continue to look for ways to retain and accommodate the expansion of Nevada businesses. By partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Development Center, we are connecting our businesses to resources that will help them improve their bottom line. We're also looking at, you know, working with local professionals to the extent possible. Some of the materials you've seen up here is provided through one of our, you know, contracts that we have with local businesses. The city is also committed, will be bringing back some analysis regarding, you know, a program that we have in place for local preferences as the city's doing our business. So we'll be bringing that to the council for analysis pretty soon. You know, I kind of want to jump back to Santa Ana a little bit here. I hope I'm not, my time is going okay. You know, again, that was one of my first jobs in Santa Ana. I was the business outreach officer there. And we had many, many businesses, and the diversity of those businesses is what really kept Santa Ana strong. And so our focus was on business retention and attraction. And so while I was in that position, I had developed relationships with over 200 local businesses, and then created new programming to help them be more successful and stronger within our community. You know, and through partnerships with the SBDC, the Small Business Development, and with our Chamber of Commerce, and all the other tools that we would provide to help our local businesses be strong, was our focus, because we understood how important you were to the community. Some cities have maybe a big business or one big, large, you know, employer, you know, and that's great, and that does help. But really, it's all of you. It's all of the small businesses. That's really the mass that really creates the, you know, the bulk of the taxes and the revenue that's generated in your community to then provide services to the community. So that's very important. So that's very important. We have a Shop Local program that's continuing to help our retailers and services grow their sales locally and connect them to our community. Recently, we added a Spanish-language section to the Shop Local website, which highlights our monolingual businesses and connects them to our Spanish-speaking consumers. This year's online holiday shopping guide was also a hit with our locals. Harnessing the power of our social media, the guide reached nearly 8,000 local shoppers in a week, providing them with holiday gift ideas from our local merchants. And again, if you haven't checked that out yet or you haven't clicked there, I really encourage you to click there, particularly for those gift-giving ideas. I always struggle with that, and I wish I had seen that over the holidays. It would have been very helpful. And so as Nevada looks to our future, we need to sharpen our focus and broaden our reach. We're going to talk a little bit now about our general plan update, led by our Community Development Director, Bob Brown. We're nearing completion of that item. We hope to have adoption of that later this summer or early fall. We've done three years of outreach. We've contacted hundreds of Nevotans, dozens, through dozens of meetings in various venues. We've done online surveys to try and get input on that particular document, and we're getting very close. So at this point, we've drafted policies. I'm going to just quickly read through them for you here. So we've got policies that are to help our aging population stay independent longer, those that are encouraging more active, healthy lifestyles, which, of course, I really enjoy and love here in the City of Nevada. It's a quick note about me. I know it was in my bio, but I really like to play sports and do a lot of athletic things. Something that's important to our organization is a focus on wellness for our staff and employees, and I found already that we're very fortunate. We got a little small grant to help bolster our employee wellness program, which I think is a great thing. Back to the general plan, we have drafted policies that are going to focus new growth on underutilized and underdeveloped parcels, policies that will create a hub for high-tech and life science companies, policies that envision an efficient transportation network for everybody. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the SMART train that's going to be coming through town, policies that recognize our role in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and creating a more sustainable water supply, and finally, one that provides a plan to help us maintain our infrastructure and city services. So I'm proud to say that the general plan envisions a Nevada that is greener, more prosperous, and sustainable. One of the city council's top priorities is Nevada's environmental legacy. In March, we'll be bringing back an updated report on the status of our climate action plan to the city council to discuss how to build upon that decade-old vision and engage our community in other sustainability efforts, to create a legacy of stewardship, which is everybody's work. Let's see, let's move on to some of the development going on in town. So this year, our goal is to facilitate the development of the North Redwood Corridor. Last year, thanks to the efforts of the Community Development Staff and our Design Review Commission and through meetings with various development partners, we formulated a unified site plan that responds to feedback we received in the public shareets. I'm guessing that most of you here probably participated in that activity in the North Redwood area. So we anticipate receiving applications from some developers in that part of town in the very near future. So in the spirit of our council's vision of activating our public spaces and creating great places, our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services will be offering even more community events this year. The popular City Hall Concert Series kicked off in February and will continue on our civic green this summer. Also returning is our Sundays on Sherman, which transforms Sherman Avenue into outdoor play spaces for the entire family. I really like this slide. I can't wait to see what's going on with the bottom-left corner there with people in little plastic balls. That looks like a lot of fun to me. I'll try and make sure I stay away, though. I'm sure I'll probably get hurt if I did something like that. So both our Parks and Public Works staff continue to facilitate public feedback on the proposed Hill Recreation Area Master Plan. This envisions additional parking, more sports fields, including a synthetic turf field, and other park and community center amenities. The council will be presented the overall project schedule for consideration later this spring. It don't really show there, but has anybody ever played bocce ball? Got a couple hands up there. That was very popular up in Nono Cal. It was a really big deal up there. What about pickle? Anybody ever played pickleball? Okay, I got a couple hands in the back. That's another one that I have just learned over the last few years. It's a very popular, fast-action sport. I know that a lot of seniors are playing that. We've got a ton of interest in pickleball, so those are a couple of things that have been elevated as part of the Hill Master Plan to make that available. So if you haven't seen it yet or you haven't played, you're probably going to have an opportunity coming up in the near future here. Let's see. So ultimately, what we do contributes to the high quality of life that we have come to expect in our city. Because of you, Nevada, and through the passage of Measure C in 2015, we have been able to continue offering those services that are important to you. The most important of those is public safety. So this past year, we continued to struggle with officer retention. Staff actually made a Herculean effort over the last six or eight months to try and fill the staffing in our police department, and we did a really good job. We actually, we got to full staffing. Unfortunately, that only lasted one day. But, you know, we have some great staff over there that are working on that, and we're going to fill those positions as best we can. So we had labor negotiations that reached a successful conclusion late last year, and we're making some progress to pay our police and our city staff a wage that is comparable to other cities in the region, a wage that they do deserve. With the leadership of former Nevada Police Chief Joe Cryns and our hard-working staff in professional standards and human resources, I want to share the name Sophia Winter, who had a great role there, we were able to fill many of those vacant positions. And one of those, you know, was introduced this morning, our new police chief, Adam McGill. Under his leadership and in tandem with his dedicated and professional staff and our vigilant, engaged community, we will continue Nevada's reputation among one of the safest in the state. In fact, over this last year, our overall reported crime decreased. Violent crime decreased, and we only saw a slight increase in property crime, about 1%. This slide, I don't know if you can all see it from there, it's actually an excellent slide. It really gives a good visual of, you know, crime kind of declining, and then if you could see that red line from wherever you're at, which I think is an excellent addition to this graphic slide that shows some state legislation that really impacted our ability to provide services in the community. And so that's why those two bars to the right there kind of jump back up, but are steady and probably even declining, as some of the stats will show us. If you're interested in that, and I know a lot of people are, we've actually scheduled our police chief to come out to our city council at our upcoming meeting to provide more of a full report regarding crime statistics. So you'll see that there. Our police department continues to be a unifier of the community and a leader in outreach. Every day, they present in our community, promoting safety and awareness, enforcing our laws, and building relationships and trust. Now more than ever, the need for lasting collaborative relationships between law enforcement and the community is crucial, and we do have an abundance of that here in Nevada. One thing I will share with you is we like to be involved with the community. I know that our police chief does as well. When you see our staff, please say hello, talk to them. Don't be afraid. Don't be too shy to just wave and say hello as you're passing them. Building that relationship and having that dialogue of communication is very important, so encourage you to please do that. And so here are some highlights from our Nevada Police Department's partnerships and community engagement activities. Let's see. So speaking of public engagement, over this last year, we have made great strides in engaging our community as our city council has made it a top priority for the city. We are addressing the need for more clarity in our noticing and outreach regarding development projects and policy initiatives. I just want to say a quick thing here about that. Nevada has taken a huge next step, and we have really incorporated a lot more in terms of community engagement and information to the community than I think you'll see in any other city. Very happy to be coming to Nevada and see that effort and see that as a priority for the city. You know, this last little piece about information to the community, don't know that we have a slide up on that, but simple things like how a public notice is provided in the community. There's state guidelines, and there's regulations that we have to follow, and we do, but our staff has taken that next step to improve that, make it even better, make it more user-friendly while still meeting those guidelines. So I give our staff, Peggy, a lot of credit for that. So now I have to find where I was again. We're utilizing technology to meet people where they are and engage them early in the process and get their feedback to ensure a better product and a better decision and a better experience for all. I guess I'm wearing one of those examples right now that we're providing this presentation this morning on a lot of different venues, those that I probably have never used before myself. I can definitely guarantee I've never been streaming before, but I am now.
Rookie.
Yeah. Okay, rookie. At least I know my 16-year-old is not plugged into this government streaming sector. I can definitely guarantee that. Let's see. So we've dedicated webpages for both private and public works projects. Residents can sign up to be notified on any and all of these projects via email or text. Our public notices are easier to read, provide links for more information, and are sent out more widely and frequently. So again, if you're not tuned into that, it's very easy to go to our website and set yourself up and then click a few boxes, and then you're going to receive those notices, and you can access them, you know, once they're posted and published. You'll get a notice of that if you're interested. There you go. It's right there for you. It's really easy. Well, in this era of fake news, we recognize our responsibility in ensuring that the information we provide is timely, accurate, and helpful. We want to be the first place our residents go to for city information. We have a multitude of ways to connect with the city. And again, on this, that's part of why I say, "Say hello to our staff." Engage us, form that relationship, because I want you to call me and ask questions. I want you to contact my staff and find out, hey, what's really going on with this? And get the information and get the detail, and participate in our public process. That's really the only way. It's the best way to get the information that you need, and then you will know exactly what the actual deal is with different projects and initiatives going on in the city. So putting aside fake news, what about good news? We launched Nevada Proud late last year to feature Nevotans doing good and extraordinary works, fun facts, and innovative businesses, including San Marin High School teacher Nick Williams, who was awarded the 2015 Milken Award, Educator Award, our own Dr. Mary K. Sweeney, who I believe is here this morning someplace. Where are you, Mary? Okay, she's hiding right now. You'll see her depicted right there in the middle-left of that slide, Executive Director of our Homeward Bound of Marin, who helps homeless families in Marin. We also feature Nevada-based businesses, big and small, like the Republic of Tea, a leading purveyor of premium teas with a commitment to social responsibility, BioMarin, a highly innovated life sciences company developing innovative treatments for extremely rare medical conditions. And how about the fun fact that Bravo's Vanderpump Rules was filmed on location at our very own Hilltop Restaurant? I don't know how many of you are actually involved with that show or care about it all, about that little bit of trivia, but it did get a lot of social media attention. Mayor Athas?
Yes.
I don't think I had heard of Vanderpump Rules at all, and Mayor Athas shared with me that program.
What?
I knew I'd get in trouble for sharing that. So please reach out to us and share your Nevada Proud stories. So oftentimes, when we discuss city services, or how to improve, or how to fund, or what to provide, the piece that gets glossed over are the people behind those services. These are the people who do your resale inspections, help you to pull a building permit, renew your business license, provide childcare and other after-school programs at some of our rec centers. They keep our city facilities maintained, beautify our parks, clean out our storm drains. I think we have a good picture of a guy waist-deep in that bottom light slide there. You know, not always a fun job, but we need to get that done. It's important for our community. Fixing the potholes in our streets. They plan for a more sustainable Nevada for our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. They do safety checks when you're away on vacation. They lend a helping hand to Nevotans in need. We actually just completed one of our city recognitions of our city employees. We did that, I just did that right here at this podium a few weeks back. We celebrated over 350 years of cumulative service to the community through those groups, some that have five years of service, up to those that have been doing it for 35 years. So I guess my 28 is not that big a deal. But all those people and their commitment to providing community services is what's important to us here in this organization. And although our city organization continues to recover from the loss of nearly a third of those workers over the last decade, which obviously created frustration to our underserved residents and those employees themselves that have now become overstretched because we've lost so many, we're working to find better ways to serve you through the use of technology, through our partnerships, and with service organizations such as the Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, our relationship with the Unified School District and College of Marin, our Nevada Independent Elders, Nevada Youth Center, and partner agencies such as our Fire District, Water, and Sanitary Districts, through innovative programs such as Junior Second Units, Surveillance Camera Registry, and Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program. So despite our shrinking organization and lack of employees, we would really like to have those numbers up. We don't just stop there and say, oh, well, too bad. No, we've tried to implement as much in terms of quality programming to improve what we're doing and try and streamline those services and utilize technology to continue to provide services at a high level for the City of Nevada. So the key to maintaining and improving city services is to continue to retain and attract talented professional workforce by offering an environment that provides growth opportunities, the latitude for creativity, and the right tools to do the job, and at a competitive salary in order to live in our community. With all those accomplishments, we know we can still do better. Our competition isn't other cities like San Rafael or Petaluma. It's Google and Amazon in customer service and responsiveness. We can't do it alone, though. If we want to ensure that in the next 20 years from now, the state of the city is even stronger than it is today, we need to take strong public-private partnerships forward that get things done. Nevada's bright future depends on the actions we take today together. How am I doing on time?
You're doing just fine.
Okay, got a little bit more here to share with all of you.
Go right ahead and share.
In the coming months, we anticipate that SMART will be running, and we will want Nevada to take full advantage. Through the leadership of the Chamber and area employees, companies will be able to enjoy frequent rider discount passes and potential shuttle services. We will continue our partnership with the Downtown Streets Team. Their model of providing hope and a dignified path out of homelessness through meaningful work has brought a shine and a pride to our streets, in our neighborhoods, and downtown, while addressing a growing issue that is facing all communities. I'm not sure if any of you have seen them working around town. You know, they've got some bright-colored shirts. It's going to be kind of hard to miss, but check that out and encourage that. We think it's a great thing for our community. In the not-too-distant future, we will be embarking on some long-anticipated capital improvement projects, many of which are currently out to bid or in design, including major improvements to Dogbone Meadow Dog Park, actually, a multi-year effort of widening Nevada Boulevard, our annual resurfacing of about five miles of local roads, improvements to Vineyard Road, including resurfacing of new bike lanes, and projects in Hamilton, including the repair of perimeter walls throughout the neighborhood and the Levy Tow Drain Project, which will provide additional flood protection to property owners. Over the next fiscal year, we expect to have that new general plan adopted, and we've completed a downtown parking study as well. We will continue to work on business retention and expansion. Our Shop Local program will emphasize local business-to-business transaction and launch a new campaign that will connect prosperity with sustainability. As part of our ongoing commitment to public engagement and transparency, we will be updating our public engagement plan, with input from the community, of course, to bring it to council for adoption later this year. That'll probably be in October. As part of our installation of our new finance software, we will be looking to add an open data portal to provide our residents the ability to easily access and locate city data and freely share and use that data. Need a little drink of water. Let's see, where am I at? So we will be bringing City Hall to the neighborhoods by holding open houses throughout the city on various city topics, including the city's budget. This is one new piece that I've brought to our, you know, our city's process for developing our new budget. As you know, we're coming towards the end of our current fiscal year budget, which is '16-'17. It ends on June 30th. So right now, we're actively involved in creating our budget proposals for the next fiscal year that starts July 1st. Again, I don't know why Brian's sitting back there today. He should be over there working on the budget, but... He should be over there working on the budget, but... We actually are really actively involved in that. I have some more meetings later this afternoon regarding that topic. But one of the things that I'm bringing forward is some additional outreach to the community. We're going to try and do that now over the next couple of months as we're creating that budget, truly ensure that the residents and the community members in town understand what a city budget is, what it looks like, how we go about doing it, what our history is. You know, this won't be our first year's budget. And so I want to make sure we provide that educational effort. We're going to bring it out to two or three different locations around town. So again, you know, the way we wrote this last bullet here, we want to bring City Hall out to the community, make sure that they have access and understand what we're doing. And I think that will better help them be involved in the process as we bring a budget to the council for adoption a little later this spring and early summer. So with all the uncertainty at the national level, we recognize that there is pent-up demand to take action. This spring, we will be launching Volunteer Nevada, a place where Nevotans can find volunteer opportunities in Nevada via the city's website. A great option for you if you're interested in volunteerism is Earth Day, which is coming up soon. I encourage you to sign up for our annual Clean and Green Day, or volunteer to adopt an island or help beautify Nevada year-round. We also encourage you to participate on a city commission, a committee or a board. We have more than a dozen, actually, in this city, so a lot to choose from for you to get involved with your community. So I leave you, we're not going to leave you because I am definitely going to be available for question and answers, but, you know, this last thought, you know, there's a lot of malice and discourse we see on a national level. And in the midst of a divided and troubled nation, we can lift ourselves and each other. Oftentimes when we discuss city ser-- whoop, that's not right. By expanding our possibilities of collaboration, by promoting the practice of inclusion, and by embracing new and different ways of thinking to make Nevada even better, I think that should be a focus of ours for this next year. I've been here, I haven't been here a long time, but I do know that Nevada has spirit. I've definitely seen that in a lot of places. That spirit's strong and it's resilient. So let's build on that. Thank you.
Not to ask, Eric. That's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah. I apologize that that was kind of long, but, you know, again, I want to try and touch everything and give you as much information as possible. You know, it was towards the end, but this Clean and Green Day effort is really important to the community and something I think everybody should get involved with. I was talking for a long time there, but I do want to do some question and answers now. And you all have on your seats this little bit of a, you know, survey form from today. Again, I put this on everybody's seat because I do want that input. I want you to have an opportunity to share with us what your issues are and your needs. So if you don't get a chance to ask a question or come up and grab me this morning, please use that to get some information to us. So, Coy?
Questions from the audience. Over here. Go ahead and speak a little louder. We've got a microphone with you.
David Snyder, Nevada resident, but also a legal agent in Marin. What are the policies, as later on this afternoon or this evening, legal agents will be your partners in front of the organizations to assist with affidavits regarding custody for children of undocumented residents? What are the policies that govern our police department and the assistance of ICE and the detention and the sweeps that have been taken on that part of the country?
God, throwing a fastball right at the gates.
Yeah, I wore my best shoes today, though, so I'm going to have to dig in on that one. Yeah, I think what the intention of that question is to talk about what's been going on from the national level and how it affects cities in California, of course, particularly Nevada. We have provided some information and materials, as we've been requested by the media regarding our status here in Nevada. I'm very confident in our police department and our other agencies and organizations that we are inclusive and we aren't going to do anything that we haven't been doing for years in terms of providing services and responses to those organizations. We have some statements that are made. I don't have one of those handy with me here today, but I think you should all just be comfortable that we aren't changing anything right now. We're going to continue to be an open and receptive organization and serve the community that we have here in Nevada, all of them, not just, you know, certain populations, but all of our residents here in the City of Nevada.
Other questions? Sylvia.
Sylvia.
You were talking about you might, you know, you go to have a couple, three, four areas, communities to outreach. Can you include San Marin area?
San Marin?
Yeah. I just want to look.
You know where that is?
I do. Actually, live in the San Marin area. That question was about where would we be holding these community meetings? And we've targeted, you know, different areas around town, and San Marin is definitely one of them. I think we have some facilities out there that would accommodate a community meeting. We're thinking about, of course, down in the Hamilton area, maybe in the northwest Quad area. So we're going to try and get around to the different parts of the city outside of City Hall, outside of here in the downtown.
I would do San Marin twice a month.
Okay. Yes.
Other questions? Yes?
About the Highway 37 problems. I don't commute myself. My husband does, obviously. It's been a huge problem. What are we going to, what is the City of Nevada doing to help fix that, either in the short term and/or long term? It's like there were private levees that weren't involved, and I'm curious how that's all going to be.
Okay, thank you. That question was about Highway 37 and what is the city's role and responsibility there? You know, that actually is not a city road or facility, and it's not our, you know, within our budget to address that. But as I mentioned earlier, through partnerships and collaborative efforts, you know, we're very lucky, actually, that we do have relationships with the people at Caltrans, with Highway Patrol, who provided services out there, with the county, County Flood Control District. It's just, this is one of the things that's kind of difficult for local government. Sometimes things aren't actually within our purview or, you know, we don't have abilities to do those. But through partnerships and efforts, we were able to actually get some resolution on some of the issues out there, not just on Highway 37, but on our own roads, Atherton and other parts of town, where we were seeing increased traffic and trouble there. A lot of times, you know, it goes even beyond that, not just the city or Caltrans or the county. We had other organizations, like the Audubon Society, who has responsibility for some parts of the estuary out there, and there's other groups that are involved with the levees. And so sometimes things touch, you know, multiple organizations. And so coordinating those and trying to bring everybody together to say, "Hey, how are we going to address this now?" Is one of the things that we can have assistance with. And fortunately, our staff do have relationships with those other organizations that help us get there.
Yeah, just to add to that really quickly, there's a Highway 37 Policy Committee. They actually meet this morning at 9:30 at Mary Island. It's made up of the four counties, including Marin and Supervisor Judy Arnold, who represents Nevada, sits on that policy committee. They're actually here, going to hear right at 9:30 what happened with the closures and what they're going to do about it going forward. So this county, including our supervisor that represents Nevada, is on that task force and has the Chamber. We're at every single one of those, too, because Highway 37, and it's working properly. It's really important to this community.
Hang on. Thank you, Coy. That is very important. And again, there's two levels there. I understood the question is more locally here in Nevada, what are we doing to address flooding situations? And so that's immediately on-the-ground type of things that we have to do. But there's also a very big effort, as Coy mentioned, from the long-term perspective. You know, what is Highway 37 going to be and is it going to be above water, you know, for long enough for us to continue to use it? So there's multiple efforts going on. So thank you for that question.
Other questions from the audience? Go back to you, Sylvia, if no one else has. So go ahead.
So going back to the Highway 37 question, I personally have very big concern about the fact that 37, Nevada Boulevard, will go down there and that's the traffic issue. So how do we address that or how do we bring that to the conversation? I always bring that one up. Does that make sense?
I think you're talking about addressing traffic when there is a closure?
No, no, no. I'm addressing about daily traffic going south around 37, when you're going down from Rowan all the way to...
I think she's talking about going south. As you go south, commuting to San Rafael, to the city, and a access up right at 37.
Yeah, we can bring up a little bit of this, MTA.
Yeah, we have, you know, our own, we're always working on projects. I mentioned some of them earlier in my presentation that we're trying to do to improve traffic here within the City of Nevada. And then additionally, as I mentioned, there's always other levels. We have to work with our other local, regional organizations that provide programming and projects to try and improve traffic in Nevada as well as the rest of the county. So I think that issue may fall more with those organizations.
Citizen of the year, Jim McLeary. I guess we'll let you ask a question.
Thank you, Coy. Thank you, Regan. Nice presentation. This has to do with infrastructure expenditure, and as you said, the city's promoting dollars every year for infrastructure. What's, I know we talked about, we did an assessment, 20-year assessment, and determined that we needed about $1 million a year investment over that period of time for all our infrastructure needs, and maybe that still wouldn't take care of it all. What's anticipated in the new budget for infrastructure spending? Do you have any?
Okay, I do, yeah. Thank you. That's a great question. Ms. McLeary was, she was asking about infrastructure, city's infrastructure plans, and how do we address that in the future and what role, not what role, what level of dollars are we putting towards that infrastructure? I kind of want to first start a little bit about what does infrastructure mean. To us, as a city, as a local organization, it could mean our facilities. It could mean this building here. A lot of times, it means streets and roads and, you know, all the things that, you know, deliver, you know, those services throughout our community. So that's what infrastructure is. And we've got a lot of it as a city, you know, all of our different parks and recreation facilities, our police building next door, City Hall, all of the streetlights and, you know, the curb gutter and sidewalk, all of that type of thing. So we actually have quite a bit that we're responsible for in the city. And Ms. McLeary mentioned a dollar of about a million. We try, you know, as best we can to put as much into our budget each year to address those infrastructure problems. I mean, it's just responsible to start thinking about that things do break down over time and, you know, they get old. I think right now, what we have is, I think Brian's here, I think it's 1.2 million is what we've been putting in as a standard, you know, which is like pretty much all we can muster with the resources we have to try and address that. And so that's where it stands now. I hope that at least that continues or we can find other resources to bolster that because you just know things break down over time or, you know, that's just the way things work from an infrastructure perspective. And we see it all the time. Sometimes there's natural issues that, you know, with the flooding and other things. Maybe some of you have seen some of those crazy videos with streets and sinkholes, you know? I mean, you don't anticipate that, you don't expect that, but you better be prepared to fix that and repair that with the current dollars you have. So that's why we try and think that way. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Davis. As the trees are leaking out and the grass is growing quickly here in Nevada, we're also going to be looking forward to a pretty aggressive and threatening fire season coming up. Last year was quite significant. We've had five years of drought. How do you plan to partner with the fire district to mitigate some of these threats that we have in our community at this time?
Did everybody hear that question, in terms of partnership with the fire district and trying to be in advance of any issues that may come up with what could be, you know, a serious fire season? I think it's exactly what we've talked about earlier, is working together, getting together to discuss and plan for that. Make sure that we have a plan in place. Our fire district, we're very fortunate to have a great partner like that here, since it's actually not a city service of having a fire department, having that good relationship. We work together on a lot of things. You know, most recently, we've activated our EOC a few times this year in partnership. We work at the Marin Valley Mobile Country Club on issues out there. There was a significant issue over the last year. I know that our city council is committed. We've actually approved an expenditure, quite, you know, costly expenditure to do some of that advanced work, particularly for the Mobile Country Club down in that part of town. So I think we're going to do well with that.
You mentioned widening Nevada Boulevard. I'm hoping you're talking about the section between Diablo and Towne Pious, sort of bottlenecks right there, daily?
You know, I can't picture the actual map in my head of what that is. You know, I'm seeing that my Public Works Director is sharing that, yes, that is the, one of the areas. It's a pretty extensive project. That's why in my presentation, I mentioned multi-year. There's a lot that goes into that, a lot of pre-planning and engineering and permitting before you actually even start thinking about construction and bidding for construction and then doing a project. So that's why I shared that. It's a pretty big undertaking and we are committed to doing that. And so it is on the list. You'll be seeing that schedule coming out pretty soon. Thank you.
On the far side over there, sorry.
Wait, this will be a second.
Oh, you can see, all right.
I have your point. I was like referring and seeing who else. Again, David Snyder, David in Marin. Affordable housing is something that we're addressing on an ongoing basis. And congratulate the community for Homewood Village and Homeward Bound and some of that work. In the plan that you're establishing, have we identified sites and areas in Nevada for potential homeless shelter? I'm sensitive to the rest program in the neighborhoods. And just if you have any comments or updates on that?
Thank you. That question was about affordable housing. You know, I've been here, you know, four months now. I've already seen lots of programming and lots of opportunities that this city has taken advantage of and moved forward. You know, again, Nevada has got a very solid foundation and I think is moving forward in a lot of respects. We have an inclusionary housing policy already, which is 20%, and so that is also going to be contributing for, not just currently, but for the long-term to that issue. Yes, you mentioned Homewood Village. We took a little staff field trip out there as they were just opening. They didn't even have all the units filled yet. Again, a great project, took a lot of time and effort through the planning stages and putting that together. You know, so there's just some shining examples that are fresh and new and probably a lot more that are coming. So I think Nevada is a leader in that area, affordable housing.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. LJ Silverman, I live out in the Pleasant Valley. I'm wondering if the City of Nevada actively recruits to try to fill empty office space, ID firemen.
Didn't you hear Google's coming? I've heard lots of rumors.
That was streamlined. That was a joke.
Thank you for that question. He was talking about our efforts to fill vacant space that there may be in town. He mentioned particularly professional office space, but, you know, we have retail space as well. Not a whole lot of commercial or industrial space. We have only a very small, you know, inventory of that type of space. I haven't been actively involved with that yet, but it is definitely something I think is important for the community as part of our economic development program, is to try and do that, try and fill those spaces. It's important to have, you know, business-to-business interaction as well. And so the more you have, the more that it's full, the more opportunity there is for local interaction of businesses. So that's something we do have on the slate for our economic development program.
Anybody, any other questions before I go back? I have a question, so I'm going to ask mine. So I serve on a committee with chambers in the North Bay, and we just had a legislative summit where we look at our top priorities for the year legislatively to talk about in Sacramento, what's important to the business community in Marin, San Antonio, Napa County, and all of that. And through that, we had some discussion about, our guest speaker was Senator McGuire. And, you know, the state has hired Eric Holder to sort of defend California against potential federal policies they're not interested in or hurt California, along with, they might be hiring other people to deal with preserving California's record on environmental issues and environmental policies and positions and not being subject to federal deregulation and things like that. Where does Nevada fall in being involved in that? Does it impact Nevada at all? Would Nevada be behind what the state is doing to protect the state's interests from potential federal things that might not be beneficial to Nevada? Or is it all going to be at a higher level than the city?
Okay. Thank you, Coy. I'm not going to try and restate all of it. I hope you all heard that, kind of a long question. But really, our city, Nevada, we are a very active member of the League of California Cities. We actually have our mayor, Denise Athas, is the president of our division of the League of California Cities. And through that organization, we keep track of legislation and activities at the state level. And really, that organization defends cities like us, you know, in terms of our issue and our position on these topics that may be coming up. And they do it from a statewide perspective. So if they're typically in favor of something or opposing something, we know that it's probably something that will also affect the City of Nevada. And so our membership in that organization is one of the ways that we try to do that. We're also considering for this next year, and I'll probably put a request in the budget, whether or not we want to join the National League of Cities. It's something that could very well benefit us as well as other cities across the country to have that additional lobbying effort and that interaction and understanding of what may be coming down from a federal level that will impact our cities. A little bit of a cost to that, you know, I see it as nominal, and this year in particular may be a good idea to move forward with that, but we will see as we move forward. What's kind of interesting in that respect is the new president, executive director of the California, League of California Cities, came from the national level. And so she is, this person is very well-involved with, you know, national-level politics and issues that could be coming down.
Where does Nevada fall in being involved in that? Does it impact Nevada at all? Would Nevada be behind what the state is doing to protect the state's interests from potential federal things that might not be beneficial to Nevada? Or is it all gonna be at a higher level within the city?
Okay, thank you, Coy, I'm not gonna try and restate all of it, I hope you all heard that, kind of a long question, but really, our city, Nevada, we are a very active member of the League of California Cities. We actually have our mayor, Denise Athas, is the president of our division of the League of California Cities. And through that organization, we keep track of legislation and activities at the state level, and really, that organization defends cities like us, you know, in terms of our issue and our position on these topics that may be coming up, and they do it from a statewide perspective. So if they're typically in favor of something or opposing something, we know that it's probably something that will also affect the City of Nevada, and so our membership in that organization is one of the ways that we try to do that. We're also considering for this next year, and I'll probably put a request in the budget, whether or not we wanna join the National League of Cities. It's something that could very well benefit us as well as other cities across the country to have that additional lobbying effort and that interaction and understanding of what may be coming down from a federal level that will impact our cities. A little bit of a cost to that, you know, I see it as nominal, and this year in particular may be a good idea to move forward with that, but we'll see as we move forward. What's kind of interesting in that respect is the new president, executive director of the California League of California Cities came from the national level, and so she is, this person is very well-involved with, you know, national-level politics and issues that could be coming down, so I think that has already strengthened our position here in California in terms of protecting cities' rights and, you know, funding sources that may be coming down. But yeah, that is a big issue for this year, and I think we're very well-positioned to stay in that. We have good relationships with our legislators. Again, thank you to our council members for maintaining those relationships and keeping those lines of communication open, so we can go to them and provide our feedback when needed.
All right, you get the last question, Sylvia?
Okay, so a compliment and a question? A compliment is related to our community development department, as well as MDP, for develop the junior accessory unit, and for the develop the My Own Family Crime Free Program, which was here, developed here, and now is, you know, adopted by around plenty. So that's a compliment, and follow-up was that, is the how does, how would the city kind of educate or advertise the junior accessory post programs? Because I think it would help with our affordable housing issues and, you know, with...
That's a great question, and thank you for that compliment. I am proud of Nevada for working on that second unit, accessory dwelling unit program, it is pretty unique. I think one of the ways that we should do that is we should enlist our staff here with the Nevada Proud that we showed earlier today. I think that's a great way to share innovative things that are happening in our community, make sure people have the opportunity to take a look at that, so thank you, we'll add that to that list.
You're done, dude.
All right. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. Thank you, Coy.
Good job.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Perfect.
Here's mine, but always.
Okay. Thank you.
Fun teasing you.